Call this September 2nd regular city council meeting to order and I'd like to call on Ward 4 for invocation.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you reverently. We ask that you guide us and direct us, as we as servants mostly, but also leaders of the community. Help us make the correct decisions for the city of Hopkinsville and do the most good for the most people. Guide us and direct us in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge please if you can.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Call on the clerk to call the robe.
Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Salins.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner. Councilmember Meek. Councilmember Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Drew.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. I'd like now to call on item 5, awards and recognitions. Hopkinsville Fire Department Chief.
Good evening. We have just a few things to do here tonight. Our first is a promotion for newly promoted Lieutenant Brandon Peck. Brandon graduated from Christian County High School. He started with us in 2010. He's promoted on the 4th of this year. His, his wife Nicole is here tonight. She's going to be penning him. His achievements, he's received a deputy chief meritus award. He's been the engineer of the year for several years, several committees, and we're happy to have him.
Mayor. You should raise your right hand, sir. Thank you. I state your name. As citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that we'll faithfully perform to the best of your ability the duty of lieutenant for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and will support, protect, and preserve life and property of the citizens of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. So help me God. Thank you, sir.
Next we have a retirement. Lieutenant Meacham, you'll step up here. Lieutenant Meacham is retiring after 22 years and four months of service. He's here with his, his wife Heather McKenzie couldn't make it. Right. Over, over Lieutenant Meacham's career, he's been the commander of our honor guard. He's been one of our lead live fire instructors. He's ran our fire blast trailer, numerous certifications. He's also the assistant chief of Lafayette. I'll read this right here. It says Larry Dale Meacham Lieutenant, presented to Larry Dale Meacham in recognition of and appreciation for 22 years, four months of loyal faithful service. Your dedication and devotion to the Hopkinsville Fire Department has contributed immeasurably in saving lives and protecting citizens. We are proud of your accomplishments throughout your career. On behalf of the citizens of Hopkinsville, we thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We have, we have one recognition tonight. We're going to promote Joseph Buffer the sergeant. Sergeant Buffer, he's done a couple of roles here at the police department. He's been in patrol, made it to detective. He worked on the task force for internet crimes against children, made several arrests against child predators. And when he found out that we would be doing a promotion process, he actually stepped down from his position as detective because he said he wanted to get more experience on the road to better himself as a patrol sergeant. So to take a step back like that, just it, it really lets you know his commitment to his job and his goals. So that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Brian Buffer.
Citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of abilities and duties of police sergeant for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So help me God.
Thank y'all very much.
Easy on that poor dog, man.
Alrighty, we will now move into item seven, no, item six, public comments. If anyone would like to come and speak at the microphone, you have three minutes. State your name and address.
Good afternoon, my honor.
Good afternoon.
City councilman. I want to comment Mr. Brittany for keeping the area clean on the east side of town, picking up trash and stuff. And I'm still thinking about my grandmother about before Shirley Justin, I'm trying to get to being, not even had it ready where a being for her called be equal for both sides, you know, Democrat and Republican. So I think the town is doing good under Republican more than Democrats. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak of public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into mayor's comments. The entertainment district opened two weeks ago. We had a great event out there. We had a good ribbon cutting. A lot of people downtown, record numbers for the, for the restaurants and businesses. We had a lot of fun with that and then we turn around. And last weekend, we had Hop Town After Dark with Councilman Smith and Toby and him done a great job with that. We had good numbers there. We had a lot of people out enjoying ourselves. Hats off to Miss Amanda Brunt for the 311 app that we've got the ribbons cut on and it, we ask everybody to please get out and take a look at the app and see if we can get you hooked up for that. Gander Park, if anyone hadn't seen it, we're working on that as we, every day. The MAC committee and them are really working forward, getting an internal flame out front there and making it a lot nicer and sprucing up. Mike Perry and his crew's been helping a lot with that with Public Works and I'd like to say thank you for that. And a big shout out to Amy and them over at the visitor centers thanking for all they're doing. And everybody enjoyed the little alien invasion in Hopkinsville. We had a lot of fun with that. You'll see the little green alien back floating around here in city hall here in a little while. When else we get it put back out there. Doggy Dip is on next weekend at the water park. We're going to come out and have a lot of fun for that. Bring out your little four-legged dogs and three-legged, however you want them to be. I know we got a few of them out there three-legged running around. My neighbor's got one. He loves that little dog to death. But bring them out, enjoy it. We have a lot of fun with the dogs out there at the Doggy Dip and we'll have a lot of fun. Please come on out. And Ward 3's got the September 27th coming up. We have a lot of fun coming on that. Don's going to talk about that here in a little bit. We're going to have a lot of fun over in Ward 3. We're going to have a fun day there on the 27th. Okay, and now we'll go into reports from officers committee and guest speakers. Now call Melissa Clayton to them.
Good evening. I'm going to bring you guys July's financial report. All right, we had two interfund transfers in the month of July. One for the Boulevard Bash and one for the Focus 21 Century Foundation donation. So total interfund transfers for the year, $2,500. Remaining balance in the interfund, $97,500. Our payroll tax revenue for the month of July, for the first time since I've been chief financial officer, we actually have a decrease in equivalent payroll for the month. Last year we collected $1,947,296. This year we collected $1,918,829. That's a decrease of 2% for the year. Insurance premium tax, this is our bright spot. It is up for the year. We collected in the month of July, $1,729,632, and that is an increase in equivalent premiums over last year by thirty, 31.87%. Business licenses were also down for the month. Last year in the month of July, we collected $256,000. This year we collected $154,000. So that is a decrease of 39.78% in business license tax. We don't report payroll in the month of July. We won't report, I mean, property tax, sorry. We don't, won't report property tax until we, until October, when we get the property taxes in. So that's our three revenues we report on. So for month one, the month of July, we started the year this year, $317,904 in prior year encumbrances. We collected $5,149,173. We have actual expenses of $4,914,3, giving us positive revenue over expenses in the month of July of $553,074. We did have $104,000 in encumbrances remaining, and so that gives us our revenue over expenses, $448,816. When we compare our fund balance last year to this year, we did have revenue over expenses by almost $100,000 more in the month of July than we had this time last year. Our municipal road aid fund, we started the year with $353,535 in prior year encumbrances. We collected $54,105. We had actual expenses of $30,799, giving us a positive revenue over expenses of $299,430. We still do have encumbrances of $336,658, giving us negative more expenses than, than revenue of $37,228. Our capital fund, we started the year with $967,863 in encumbrances. We haven't done any capital transfers. We'll do them in the month of September. We had actual expenses of $194,146. So we have positive revenue over expenses of $773,717. We still have $964,000 in encumbrances. So we have a more expenses than revenue of $190,502, if we were to pay all those encumbrances out. Our departmental expenses for the month of July, we should be at 8.3%. So the administration department's at 7.3, the tax department's at 19.1, information technologies at 22.1, and the legislative department's at 7.8. Police department was at 7.8, ECC was at 6.6, the fire department's at 7.1, EMS is at 9.3, and fire prevention was at 6.6%. In our public works area, public works admin was at 7.9, city maintenance was at 7.6, Fort Campbell contracts was at 6.9, service center was at 7.4, parks and recreation was at 10%, the sportsplex was at 7.7, and the aquatic center's at 23.7% at the end of July. So overall, in the general fund, we are just a little bit above budgeted for one month at 8.6%. Our municipal road aid was at 1.8% and the capital fund was at 5.3%. Our general fund cash balance, we started the year, July 1st, at $18,269,128. Plus our year-to-date revenue, minus our year-to-date expenses, gives us our cash balance at July 31st of $18,504,298. Minus our current encumbrances gives us our available cash at $18,400,040. After we subtract out our two replacement reserve, after we subtract our two reserve accounts, we have unassigned cash fund balance, $16,724,953. And that is at 35.9% of our adjusted operating budget, which is $46,566,938. So when we compare that to last year's available cash, we are just a little bit ahead percentage-wise. Last year we were at 32% of our unassigned cash balance and this year we're at 35.9. Our investment account, now that we're, we've started a new fiscal year, we will start reporting from the beginning of this fiscal year. So the cash balance on June 30th was $1,218,112. Plus our year-to-date interest gives us our cash balance of $1,220,000. And then our market value as of July 31st was $1,262,143. So it's doing good. Be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about July's finances.
Any questions from Ms. Clayton? Yes, sir.
Business license.
I mostly feel like it is still related to the IRS extending the deadline to November 3rd for anyone in the state of Kentucky to file. So I just feel like people are not filing yet. We are still down. I am really hopeful that over the next couple of months it, it picks up.
I know you don't have it to report, but also know that you know what August looked like too by now probably. Is it that same?
I did not pull August reports today. I'm sorry. I would have, I would be happy to answer. I could send you like an update tomorrow.
Potential to be a huge impact if that's a continuing trend. I mean, that's.
It is.
You just think it's, you think it's going to come in and there's not paid right now or is there something else that you're seeing from that month's reflection?
We have a lot of businesses that have not filed to get their license this year. Because they don't have to, like, we can't take their license until they file their federal return. And they aren't required to file their, file their federal return until November. And because of that, a lot of businesses have filed an extension and so we have no idea. I'd like, I can't predict the future. I can't predict what these businesses are going to turn in. So I really have no idea what's going to come in. I am hopeful that we will, that they will eventually start filing and we'll start seeing revenue. But right now we, we aren't seeing it.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor. I was just going to say, we don't have 40% less businesses.
No.
So it is going to come.
Well, we got to, we're going to hope it comes.
Right, I mean.
With that assumption, what is the mechanism the city has in place to, what does the stick end to this for us? How do we ensure that, I can remember past years, Mayor, for you, but I can remember the past. We had businesses all over the city that weren't paying, where we started sending people out to make them. So when I see a 40% decrease in that, my first thought is, oh no, a bunch of businesses resorted back to that. And what is our?
No, we will follow, we are following, we have a, a mechanism in place now where we follow back with people who don't file. But I can't print a delinquent, I could print a delinquent report right now, but they're not delinquent yet. Yeah.
I should get that. I just come the first of the year.
Yes.
So it's six months into it and we're already behind. It doesn't happen, but I just want to make sure that if this is a continuing trend, August, September, that we see that coming, that we're ready for that. Like I said, I only do that because I've seen it prior to where we are now.
Yeah. I mean, this is one of our big four sources of revenue and if it comes in at a 40% decrease over last year, we, we are going to have to dip into our reserves.
And this ain't the first time me and her's had a conversation. We, we talk about it pretty regularly.
Councilmembers, IT budget is generally at the beginning of the fiscal year higher because we're paying for subscriptions across every department at the beginning of the year.
And we did have to, we paid for the property tax role a little bit earlier in July. I was trying to get the property taxes passed early. So that's why the tax department is over. And the PVA increased our, our cost of purchasing the, their role. They charged us $60,000 this year instead of $50,000. So that may cause the tax department to have to have a budget amendment later on. I'm not going to do it yet. But that cost was $10,000 more than what I had anticipated. And they did not give us any warning that they were going to increase our cost. So we paid that in July instead of in August. So that's why they are over percentage-wise.
That wasn't nice.
Yeah. Any other questions for Ms. Clayton? Ready?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving into item nine, approval of minutes for the August 19th, 2025 regular meeting.
Summit.
Amy, second by Don. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Item 10, ordinances. Ordinance 24-2025 Special Purpose Vehicle First Reading.
An ordinance authorizing the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS Chapter 186 on highways and streets in the city of Hopkinsville and establishing restrictions for operation. Whereas the Kentucky General Assembly passed Senate Bill 63 to authorize local governments to adopt ordinances to allow street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS Chapter 186 to operate upon highways within its jurisdiction. And whereas Senate Bill 63 contains equipment requirements for and restricts operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on all highways, including those in local governments that allow operation by ordinance. And whereas the city council of the city of Hopkinsville determines that the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on all thoroughest highways is beneficial to the city and its residents. And whereas the city of Hopkinsville reserves its rights to impose additional restrictions on the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, definitions, as used in this ordinance shall have the following meaning. One cabinet means the Kentucky Department of Transportation. Two highways shall have the same meaning as defined in KRS 186.102. And three, street legal special purpose vehicles shall have the same meaning as defined in Senate Bill 63 as qualified in KRS 186.77. Section 2, authorized use. One, street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by Senate Bill 63 and qualified in KRS 186.077 shall be authorized to operate on designated highways within the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Two, operation of street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS 186.077 shall be subject to state law requirements and restrictions, including any regulations adopted by the cabinet. Three, the operator of the street legal special purpose vehicle, when operated on public roadways, shall be properly licensed to operate a motor vehicle per KRS 186.410. Four, the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles shall be limited to highways within the city, having a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less. Five, any passenger of a street legal special purpose vehicle under the age of 18 shall wear a protective helmet at all times the vehicle is being operated within the city limits. Section 3, if any part of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or unenforceable, the remaining parts shall remain in force and effect. Section 4, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Randy, any discussion? All righty. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner? That passes on first reading.
Okay. Item B, ordinance twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five repeal of ninety-three oh seven commercial rate, commercial recycling first reading, excuse me.
An ordinance repealing section ninety-three point oh seven, commercial recycling of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances pertaining to commercial recycling rates. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that section ninety-three point oh seven, commercial recycling of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby repealed in its entirety. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Amy's second by Chuck. Any discussion? Travis?
Does this affect any of our partners in the industrial park, the commercial accounts in them?
Yes.
Okay. Were they given any notice? Communication? Are we just ripping this out without letting them know? I'm, I'm just asking.
Brian?
They're, they're going to have thirty days' notice anyway before, before we, you know, enact this. To give them ample opportunity and, you know, so they can either find an alternate, or if we happen to get another contractor in here that's, uh, going to take care of that, so.
They possibly might have other options?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Kind of my question, I guess. I know we talked before the last meeting about having a company come in. Has that been done yet?
No, we haven't had a, an outside company come in yet and assess any, uh, I think we're waiting till the, uh, committee of the whole on that. We're going to kind of talk about that in committee of the whole.
Yes, we talked about. Right.
You're putting together some options for the chairman.
Right. We're trying to get some things, information drawn together for you. We just haven't got it all done yet because we're there again, how are we going to do it with a third party, or how we can get them just come and do it yourselves, or how are we going to work that out? We're getting that together for, committee of the whole for you on the eighteenth. Okay?
So until we do have some kind of a proposal to make to our commercial partners in the industrial park, we're going to continue to pick up their recycling. Is that correct?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna continue this until it'll actually, on our budget, it's scheduled to go through, uh, you know, September thirtieth through the end of the month. But, um, after that, then we don't have any way to fund it.
Answer to your question was no.
Yeah.
I, I think the answer to your question was no, that there is no plan for, for industrial park or anything.
Right now, that's what we're trying to do, draw some information and give it to them, but September thirtieth, it will be over recycling, will be over in Hopkinsville.
And no communication.
Yeah, the communication thing, I don't, do you know, happen to know how many, in, in industrial park, how many of those industries take part?
Uh, in, in the actual industrial park, there's twenty-four. Uh, we have a hundred and fifty-nine commercial customers.
You said there's a hundred and how many commercial?
Uh, it was a hundred and fifty-nine.
A hundred and fifty-nine? Twenty-four per take.
And that's the, the way we're going, uh, you know, we, we need to know whether, whether city council, whether y'all's pleasure is to go and have a third-party contractor come in, or whether, you know, we're going to go ahead and open that up to allow people to use whoever they wish. And once that, kind of, once that's nailed down, then we can start making, you know, specifics.
And, and maybe I was, maybe I didn't understand correctly in the last meeting, but what I thought I was hearing we were going to do was we were going to call and let some outside companies know that our city is no longer doing this service for our, for our residents, for our industry, for our commercial. And then we were going to tell them, hey, come into our community, assess it, let us know what that cost would be for all these entities, our, our residents, our commercial, our industries, everything. So we could put that out to them and they can start deciding, but I, I, I say that because I thought that would have already been in motion. Right now, I'm starting to think that all we're doing, stomping on the gas to get rid of the program before the thirtieth, and be damned everybody that wanted it. Um, it's just kind of, I mean, I was look, I, I was voting for, to get rid of it, uh, and I'm fine with that. But I thought we had found a solution that potentially would still allow our citizens and businesses to have an opportunity to keep this going, and I thought we were going to run ahead with that, and I know that required an ordinance change, that's nothing more than a piece of paper and us voting, so that's not an issue really either.
Now, we have to do the, or the flow control change by the eighteenth. I was going to try to bring you some things, options in, this is what we're doing. For y'all can say, okay, we're going to do third-party, or we just want, y'all change the flow control and just say, here it is, anybody can do it.
I guess then, I, I wonder if, uh, let me know, if we vote, okay, let's send it tonight, because it's still got to go through a second vote. I think before that second vote takes place, we should have that stuff done and have that before so we can say here it is or not. And, and if somebody else feels different, please tell me, because I'm, I'm trying to think this through out loud as we're sitting here, so.
Okay, to be a verbal processor, I felt the same way you did. I thought we had a plan in place.
I also understood that way.
Commercial customers that we have that they will not miss a day of service. When we finish, the next day they'll go in, and that's what I, you know, that's the communication that I kind of, you know, got from administration. We haven't, what, we need to put the gas pedal on, making sure that our, our businesses are taken care of, not just finishing the program.
And, and it may still be able to be done by the thirtieth, and, and I think that's a good goal, because I don't want to keep dishing out money to keep running that either, if that's the case, but, um, so if that means we have to have it that same day before, and we make sure those issues have been worked out, and then we either vote for the second reading that same night, or we say no to it that night. But I think that that timeframe should be between the time we approve this and before that second reading, even if it's the same night or the second reading.
Right.
Right, even if it's the same night, that's fine, as long as this stuff has been, the council feels like it's been done, then we can still vote for the second and final reading, and still allow them to be done. Thirtieth, I think. I don't know. Anybody?
Melissa has stepped to the microphone. What, what, for what reason?
What we've discussed is, the first thing that has to happen is you have to change the ordinance to allow someone else to come into the city. That is step number one, because until then, it doesn't do us any good to say, hey, y'all come in if we haven't changed the ordinance. So we have to have an ordinance change. Um, what we met and discussed about was bringing the presentation back to you guys on the eighteenth, which I'm hearing that you guys don't really want to wait that long. Um, but after that, what our plan was, was to bring you the options. Um, I have called other cities to see what they are doing and what our options are. Um, it appears to me the best option is probably to go, well, maybe like the franchise route. Troy and I have talked about that a little bit at our last meeting, um, where it becomes more like we put, once we repeal these ordinances, then it becomes, um, it's no longer on solid waste, it comes back to the city for the city to decide what we want to do with recycling, so it is back on our plate. Um, and the options, there are a lot of options we can do, but in my mind, we need to, if we're going to open it up, we need to put it out for bid, and we need to contract with one person to come in and not allow a free-for-all. Um, the most attractive part of recycling is the commercial side. Um, most people don't want to do curbside, but I think we would have to, in the bid, make it where they have to do both if we want to keep curbside recycling. But that is also a question that we need to talk about and discuss. Um, because a recycling company doesn't want to come in and just do curbside, or just do commer, I mean, they may want to come in and just do commercial, but for us, if we want to offer curbside, I don't think, I think in the bidding process, we would have to put it out and, and say that you have to do both. Um, and I don't know how many companies would bid to do both, and we may have to look at it again. But that's, that's kind of where we are in the things we've been talking about. We were planning to bring you a presentation on the eighteenth. If you want it sooner than that, we can work on that, but I don't have anything to present to you tonight of what the options are.
Okay, but, but to be able to even do that, we have to have a change to the ordinance.
Yes.
So is there a reason, I'm going to ask our city attorney, is there a reason why we cannot do that tonight?
Well, we, we don't know what change is going to be required at this point. I know one part of the ordinance is, uh, there's a, a flow control, where all of the garbage in the city is actually property of the city. It's, uh, it has to come through the city. So we don't know what other changes are going to be necessary, so what we'd like to do is see exactly what council, which direction you want to go, and then we can present, um, some options as far as the ordinance changes.
Choices are always nice. I think we should really shop out a third-party and then give every commercial customer an opportunity to choose their, their provider if they want to, and we need to stay in, you know, let them know, be, be in communication with it. A communication needs to be sent to each of them, and, and we need to move ahead. We need to not allow them to go a day without service, if possible.
I'm more worried about these twenty-four industrial park businesses, because they have ISO ratings and, I mean, they.
The eighteenth is the next council meeting in London.
But one option is, this is just the first reading, and then if you're not comfortable at the next reading, it can be deferred until such time that you've got the information for you to make a decision on the final reading. Because this, after the second reading, then the commercial rates, after that's published, then that's gone, and the commercial service is then not available because we don't have the rates in the ordinance.
Right.
So, let me ask this, and, and this was probably answered at one of the meetings, maybe I missed it. When we're talking about the totality of the loss, or the, the, the loss that it costs to continue to run recycling, how much of that total loss is based off the residential versus the commercial versus the industry? In other words, is residential seventy-five percent of the reason? Because if it is, then we have the opportunity to sit and talk and go, okay, then we can do that now, but the commercial industry can be held for a minute. Is that, was that answered before? I don't, I don't know.
No, I don't think we answered that, uh, in totality. Um, and I don't have an exact number on that, but I would say you're, it's probably seventy-five percent of, of, of our money. We get a lot of money off the commercial side, as far as revenue. But now, on the other hand, you know, the, the, the curbside doesn't bring us as much money.
I guess my question then was, could we have done, the, could the commercial and industry have remained? Because you're going to need less personnel if you don't do the residential. You're going to need less trucks if you're not doing the residential. So savings would have been there, but I'm just saying with that.
The, the recycle department only has, has four employees, and that makes up seventy-five percent of the cost to run the recycle department. So keeping curb, keeping commercial, um, does not eliminate those four positions. I don't know how many positions would be eliminated if we kept commercial, but that makes up seventy-five percent of the cost.
The reason I ask is because my follow-through that that would have been part of that reasoning for the commercial ministry is because according to the others, others out there and surrounding communities, uh, we charge nowhere near enough.
It's true.
Right? So part of our problem is, is our rates for our service have been set for, set too low. You can go look around and, and see that real quick.
Yes, which, uh, count, which city council controls? You guys control the rates.
I got here in January. I'm catching on. Um, but I, I think. Okay. I'm personally fine with, with voting it for tonight, because nothing's going to change whether we vote it tonight or not. The only thing that we can do is at least keep the process moving forward.
Correct.
And then, in my opinion, the real decision will be made at the next council to find out what information we have or don't have. And if we're comfortable, then we can go ahead and vote the second one that night, push it through. If we're not, then we can halt it right there.
Right.
At least that's how I'm thinking in my head. At the end, if somebody else was different, we share.
Brian, has your board members, Brian, have your board members met with the Industrial Foundation or those folks?
Uh, no, sir, they haven't. They just, it's a, we've looked at the numbers and it's just, it, whether you look at the curbside or the res, or the commercial side, it's just not profitable to us.
No, just for information purposes.
Just for information.
Oh, just for information.
They need to know.
No.
Now, we have to inform these folks what's going on.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Mayor and council, we'll be talking. Amanda to the Industrial Foundation and everything tomorrow. Take care.
We'll get it took care of. We'll handle this. We'll get with Industrial Foundation, and we'll get with the, uh, industrial side. And we'll, we'll keep pushing forward for the information for you, for the sixteenth. If we get it beforehand, you will get it beforehand. Okay? That's all I can do right there.
Yeah, and again.
Because Melissa's been working on it, Troy's been working on it, so, you know, we've been trying to find a way that we can do something, because then we still got to get the flow control straightened out too. But just like I said, it is an ordinance, but we got to know the numbers on this.
How long will it take you to get that information together?
Well, we got to have it together for by the sixteenth now, it looks like. Couple weeks. Got, got two weeks.
Okay. I, I don't mean to be critical. I'm, I'm thankful for.
Oh, no, you're very, you're very honest, Don. We've got to let these folks know what we're doing.
I'm thankful for our solid waste in Hopkinsville. I, to me, it's one of the better programs that we have, so I'm very supportive of that. But I mean, and also of, of stormwater, but I mean, when stormwater was in here, was a lot of, we're looking into.
Right.
I mean, I heard that four or five times, and, you know, now I'm hearing a little bit of the same of that tonight.
Oh, no, this here's got to be answered by, by the eighteenth, so y'all can have this all on your, all on your plate by the eighteenth. And now it's told by the sixteenth, so I moved it up three days.
Okay, and so we'll be able to enact whatever we need with the ordinance or whatever by that point as well, so that we can give our customers some word that they can make a decision on their business.
I think, well, once there's a decision from council on which way you want to go, whether it be a franchise or opening it up, that, that's going to depend then on what type of ordinance we're going to need, so we'll need to come back to you with an ordinance at that point.
So that'll be after September?
Right.
Okay, like October or like November?
Why can't you have a special call meeting? We seem to do that every time for economic development.
We can, Chuck. It's not a problem.
I, I mean, if, if it's that important not to have a lapse.
And we do have a special call meeting on five-thirty on the eighteenth already.
Are, are you asking for a special call committee of the whole to have the discussion?
I'm not asking for a special call at all. I'm just saying that is an option that we exercised before on other things, so why can't we do it for that if we need to?
I don't think we have time to go to committee of the whole.
Doug, real quick, on the ordinance part of it, the flow. The trash in the city belongs to the city.
Yes.
Does that mean if you take it outside of here, that you still come across our scales?
Yes.
Can we charge you? So does that, so I guess part of what then we're talking about had to change is, is if we open this up and we allow a company come in here, we're going to remove that, because we're not going to charge them to come here to take our trash away that we don't offer anyway, and still charge them a business license. Is that, is that basically what we're saying? That would have to go, okay.
And, and can that ordinance differentiate between regular household waste or trash and recycling?
Okay.
And we'll just have to define that.
I, I think it just needs to be done ASAP.
I agree.
Do you have anything else, Miss Brittany?
I just, I think my primary concern is how many of these, uh, companies in the industrial park require, are, are required by their corporations to maintain recycling, to keep certain readings. And we are, I mean, for lack of a better word, we're essentially screwing them. We haven't given them notice. We're taking away their recycling, and then what? We don't even have an answer for them.
Thank you.
So I do appreciate, you know, that Troy is willing to talk to them to, tomorrow, but that doesn't give them a solution for something they're required to do.
We had a motion and a second. Any more discussion? They call clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
And that does pass.
All righty. Item C, ordinance 26 dash 2025 FYI, 2526 operational budget amendment, first reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, by summary, section one of ordinance 172025, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026 is hereby amended as follows. Revenues, general fund $56,653,517. Municipal road aid $1,326,507. Prior year, $1,02394. Total revenues $59,419. Expenses, general fund $57,673,911. Municipal road aid $1,326,507. Total expenses $59,418, plus zero. Section two, the full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8 o'clock AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
All right. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All righty, um, any discussion on this? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner? And that passes on first reading.
All righty. Municipal orders. Municipal order 37 dash 2025 FYI, 23, 2223 C, DBG budget.
Whereas Hopkinsville City Council passes CDBG budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 through municipal order 282022. And whereas $67,973.50 was budgeted for the Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program. And whereas there is unspent funding left from the budgeted line item in the amount of $29,423.92. And whereas the City of Hopkinsville has requested and has, has been granted a substantial amendment by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to amend our annual action plan and consolidated plan to include improvements to critical infrastructures by resurfacing parking lots to low to moderate income neighborhoods. And now therefore be it ordained, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the following reprogramming of fiscal year 2022, 2023 funds within the CDB budget from Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program to Public Facility Improvement Program amount $29,423.92.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Travis, Amy, any discussion?
Oh, I got a question. Uh, on these funds, I got asked, uh, what all can those funds be spent on? And why didn't we reallocate them beforehand?
Melissa.
Uh, yeah.
So as you might imagine, there are a lot of rules that go along with the CDBG money. And, um, we, the city, took over managing the CDBG program last July. Um, throughout that process, we've been working with HUD, trying to find a, um, a way to spend them. Our first, one of the first substantial amendments we, we presented to, like, there's a whole process of submitting a substantial amendment to your action plan and getting that approved by HUD. So we've been working with our program coordinator out of Louisville, trying to figure out how we can spend this money. Um, and in the meantime, we are still like looking at redoing a, a home improvement program to spend funds on in the future. Um, but for right now, what we got approved was to use this money on public facilities to improve the, we, we were going to try to put it in streets. And so we submitted us to substantial amendment to HUD and they pretty much rejected us and said that we couldn't do repaving of streets. We could only do it if there were new streets. Um, so there's just lots of rules like that that go along with the CDBG money. So trust me, we've looked at a lot of different things. So, um, this, we worked with the Public Works Department. In the spring, we went out and we took a tour of like all the playgrounds and everything that was in the inner cities and in the places where we could spend the money trying to come up with a solution. Um, so the Boys and Girls Park, Parking Lot is, I don't know if you've been over to the Boys and Girls Parking Lot, but it needs to be repaved. And so that's our first project. We're going to repave the parking lot there with these funds. So anyway, um, after we do that project, I think the next one is West Second Street. Is that right, Mike? No. What's the next one? West Side Park. Um, anyway, we're working together to bring these improvements. After we do the Boys and Girls Club Parking Lot, then we're going to do the West Side Parking Lot. But put it to use in, you know, needed areas. Did I answer your question? I feel like I'm kind of all over the place.
Will the basketball courts be included in that as well?
I don't think it can be used to resurface the basketball courts.
Is that something we could check on?
Yes. I mean, yes.
I, I just feel like they're, they, they have dips in them and they're not safe for the kids that are over there playing.
Yeah, we wanted to, so one of the first things we, after we went the whole street route and it didn't work, we looked at, you know, redoing the playgrounds and stuff. Um, I'll have to check into whether or not we can use it for the basketball courts.
Uh, I never thought about it till now, so I'm going to ask a really, how do they define the difference between the parking lot over there and the basketball court? Because if we need to take the goal down for 48 hours to get it all done,
technically-
then put them back.
I, we'll definitely check into it. I mean, there's all kinds of rules.
Always.
I like it.
I think my concern there was just how can this better help the community? I mean, repaving parking lots is great, but are there more beneficial ways? Uh, that's just where my head's at.
Yeah, like streets.
Yeah, we can't, we can't-
We can't use it on the streets, though.
I heard that, I heard that.
I know, I wish we could have.
Thirty thousand is not a lot of pavement either.
No.
I was just going to ask the question, when was the proposal, the one that was rejected for the streets, whatever, submitted in what year?
Oh, the, we've done this year, '25.
Two thousand twenty-five.
Since we took over, yeah.
Okay. And who from the city staff actually oversees HIP?
Well, the Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program, since it came back to the city, July 24th, we have, we, we can't run that program. It was ran down in CDS. So nobody at the city is overseeing the Hopkinsville Home Improvement. In essence, it really doesn't exist anymore. We have to rewrite our home, uh, program.
Can you elaborate what you mean when you say it was ran down in CDS?
Um, CDS used to manage the CDBG money before July 2024. Um, they, they managed the, the CDBG funds for us.
But would it be wrong to assume that the city manager is overseeing this program with your help or who's, who's actually doing this?
It would be quite wrong. Um-
No. I, I am overseeing the program with-
I didn't hear what you said.
Um,
Okay.
I'm currently overseeing the CDBG program. Our grant writer is involved along with our Revenue Enhancement Coordinator. We are actually sending them to become certified in CDBG next week. Um, we missed last September. There were some things that happened. And anyway, we are sending, um, Belinda Bab and Tiffany Terrell next week to become CDBG certified. So I really hope that they come back with a lot of ideas from HUD about, you know, how we can design our programs and all of that. But we are working together as a team, um, to come up with. We want to implement a new housing program, especially with the latest study that we've had through the CDBG program. But we have, we are looking at how other cities are doing it and trying to design one. But in the meantime, we would like to spend this money on the public facilities that HUD has actually approved for us to do, and that's what we're asking to do. I mean, if you guys don't want to, we can leave the money sitting there until we can redesign the housing program if that's what you guys want.
Yep. So do we have, the city have, I, I asked city manager, mayor, you, do we have the actual staff from the city to help add the, give the support necessary to help oversee this program without growing some new department in the city where we?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Good enough.
All right. Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All righty. Item B.
I'm saying no.
Oh, Jason's saying no. I'm sorry.
I'm saying no as well.
Thank you. All righty, municipal order 38 dash 2025 FYI, 2324 CDBG budget amendment.
Whereas Hopkinsville City Council passed the CDBG budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 through municipal order 222023. And whereas $65,225.25 was budgeted for the Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program. And whereas there is unspent funding left from this budgeted line item in the amount of $65,225.25. And whereas the City of Hopkinsville has requested and has been granted a substantial amendment by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to amend our annual action plan and consolidated plan to include improvements to critical infrastructure by resurfacing parking lots in low to moderate income neighborhoods. And now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the following reprogramming of fiscal year 2023, 2024 funds within the CDB budget from Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program to Public Facility Improvement Program amount $65,225.25.
Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
A Don, second. But Amy, any discussion on this one?
I do have just a quick question, and that is, so these three municipal orders basically cover the total of the funds that were left over now?
Yes.
So this is like $145,000, basically?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So it's $145,000 effectively being spent to repay parking lots?
Parking lots, yes. She's going to check on the other part too, for the playground. Or not the playground, basketball go, excuse me.
Do, do we have projects assigned for this other money?
Melissa? We do have.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have the two projects I just talked about assigned and we will see where we're at after that. If we need to, we can always reprogram this again if we want to. Um, future, if we get our home, if we get our new home program designed and submitted to HUD and it's approved, then we will, we can always reallocate what is not spent. Um, but these are the first two projects we, we are going to do with the funding.
But I, I don't read in the municipal order that it makes a difference whether it's like, uh, an apartment complex owned by a management company or what?
Has to be pu- has to be public.
Okay, all right. That's, I'll stop asking questions.
Yeah.
Ready to vote.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Jason? Randy? All right. All righty, that passes. Municipal order 39 dash 2025 FYI, 2425 CDBG budget amendment.
Whereas Hopkinsville City Council passed the CDB budget for fiscal year 2024 through 2025 through municipal order 162024. And whereas $50,066.66 was budgeted for the Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program. And whereas there is unspent funding left from this budgeted line item in the amount of $50,066. And whereas the City of Hopkinsville has requested and has been granted a substantial amendment by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to amend our annual action plan and consolidated plan to include improvements to critical infrastructure by resurfacing parking lots to low to moderate income neighborhoods. And now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the following reprogramming of fiscal year 2024 through 2025 funds within the CDB budget from Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program to Public Facility Improvement Program amount $50,066.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
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 Okay. All righty, item 12, other. Any other business that we need to discuss tonight at city council? Okay. Item 13, city council member comments. Ms. Amy?
I just have a comment I want to make kind of to the council as a whole, and I know I'm old school. I've been here forever. I'm the longest serving city council member. But procedurally, there's something that's really bothered me in the last couple of meetings. And so instead of me sitting here mad about it, I thought I'm just going to address everybody. But traditionally, if you're going to speak at a meeting, whether it's a city council meeting or a committee hold meeting, you should be given permission to speak. Right now, everyone's blurting out questions and whatever and comments, but it's really bothering me. So I felt like instead of me being mad, I'm going to say something. But in theory, if you have something to say, just raise your hand. And I think that it will create a little bit more order in these meetings. So I just wanted to share that with y'all. And if you don't like my comment and you want to just keep blurting things out, I mean, it's, it's your prerogative. But traditionally, we should have a little bit better order in our meetings.
I probably will keep yelling out.
What? Well, there are several. I'm not calling names. But I mean, generally though, it's, it's just protocol. So I wanted to share that.
Protocol. It is Robert Truul. It is. Any other council member comments?
Yes. Nobody else does. I'm going to take some time. I gave you all a flyer that I was giving some help on putting together. Uh, we're going to take some time on September the 27th. We have partnership with Hopkinsville Police Department, Hopkinsville Fire Department, many city, the city manager, the mayor, other department heads to be there. We're going to host a free fall fun day at Rough Park on North Drive in Ward Three. And we want to just invite everybody to come out for cookout with the cop. So free hot dogs, uh, hamburgers, whatever, and, uh, that kind of thing. We're hoping to get some bouncers for the children. Uh, Mac will be there also and they will have cornhole and just some fun. Besides Rough Park, it's just such a nice place for kids to run and play on the playground equipment. It's just a great big place to go. And so we want to highlight that. It's after summer salute is over. Hopefully the weather will be a little bit cooler. We have some live music. It's just a day to just have some fun and maybe a, a, a low impact environment, maybe high, high return for people to come out and ask questions of city leaders and that kind of thing. So I just want to invite everybody, please, if you don't mind, help to promote this. And we want all of you all to come as well so that you can represent your ward. And any folks from your ward that want to come, we'd love for them to come as well. We've partnered together with other folks in their wards doing some different things, but just want to have some fun. So I'm inviting everybody to Ward Three.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any more comments? All right, uh, we move into item 14, adjournment, uh, Ward Four, Chuck.
Discipline is the ability to make yourself do something you don't want to do in order to get a result you really want to get. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.